I'm gonna give it another minute for Commissioner Colbert. And then we'll start the public hearing part. John, you got it. Thank you. All right, it is seven oh one and I'm gonna call this town meeting to order. Our first item of business is a public hearing regarding the charter amendment. Can I have the town clerk read that into the record, please?
Will do. Public hearing charter amendment, open for public comment, three minutes per speaker. Charter amendment resolution number zero one dash twenty twenty two. A charter amendment resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, amending section eighty two dash forty five lapse of appropriations of the charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, thereby authorizing the creation of certain reserve or other non-lapsing funds to be made available for unanticipated or extraordinary expenses that may be incurred or for any other specific intended purpose as authorized by state statute or ordinance and authorizing the board to appropriate funds from any reserve established for unanticipated emergency or extraordinary expenses provided in the budget or other ordinance to meet extraordinary or unanticipated expenditures and providing that reserve funds shall not lapse at the end of the budget year, but shall remain available until appropriated and expended. And amending section eighty two dash fifty six, purchasing and contracts of the charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, to authorize the expended, the president of the Town of Board of Commissioners to make certain purchases and execute certain contracts at or below ten thousand dollars without board approval and by prescribing that the board by super majority vote may determine a different method of competitive procurement and shall provide by ordinance for certain rules and regulations to conduct competitive procurement through request from proposals, negotiated bids and proposals and other forms of purchasing. And by subjecting all contracts and purchasing exceeding seventy five thousand to be approved in writing and made using competitive or other procurement methods and generally relating to purchasing and contracts, reserve funds and municipal finance.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, John. That was a mouthful, so. Just before we go into public comment, I want to make sure, I know we've talked about this a lot, but does the board have any questions, comments, statements they want to make? Before we open for public comment. Okay. We will open the floor for a public comment and it's three minutes per speaker and just raise your hand and the town clerk will give you speaking access. It looks like we have no raised hands and no comments. Should we just leave the public, or should we just leave the hearing open until seven ten? Because that's how the schedule.
Yeah, leave it open till seven ten, adjourn the public hearing and then we'll go into the town meeting and you can call that to order.
I can't hear anything. Are we waiting for something?
Because of how we advertised the public hearing and the meeting start time, we have to wait till seven ten for, to start the regular meeting. But there's no comments in the public hearing, but we just have to hold the public hearing open until seven ten and then we'll start the regular meeting.
It's seven ten.
Is it? My computer's behind. All right then. Okay, sorry, my computer says seven oh eight, that's going on, but, okay. So if it is seven ten, we will close this public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Yes, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
John, would you call the vote for us, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Hi.
Mr. Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
The motion carries. Thank you.
With that, we will call this regular town meeting to order at seven ten. John, would you please do a roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Duckett. Commissioner Duckett.
Oh, I wonder if she thought it was a different link because sometimes we were doing that for a long time.
I went ahead and kept it the same for that reason. I didn't want everyone.
Let me just.
Yeah, let her know. Commissioner Hanchett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Here.
Town administrator Kyle Snyder.
Here.
Police chief David Burst.
Here.
And Public Works director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Town clerk John Hodson here.
Commissioner Duckett is back.
It is here.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Duckett.
All right, now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll move into the review of the agenda. Can you bring up the agenda, John, and take us through it?
All right, the agenda is as follows. Call to order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, review of agenda, closed session summary from November eighth, twenty twenty two, and the consent agenda, which is the minutes, the finance report, public safety, public works, administrative department reports, and I gotta advance real quick. We then are going to have the following business tonight. Hang on one minute. There it is. We're gonna have the financial legislative package, board vote, that includes the charter amendment zero one dash twenty twenty two, amending section eighty two dash forty five, ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero six procurement, board vote, financial policy on town credit cards, invoice payments and deposits, that's a board vote, ordinance twenty two, twenty twenty two dash zero seven historical committee, board vote, parking legislative package, board vote, resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty five, parking violation fines and fees, board vote, resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty six, parking meter rates, board vote, resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty seven, snowplow and assembly, board vote, resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty eight, cleaning contract, board vote, resolution twenty twenty two dash twenty nine, media contract, board vote, resident assistance package, board vote, service lane dumpster agreement, board vote, ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero eight, amending twenty nineteen dash zero two, town committees introduction, ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero nine, Comcast, Comcast cable franchise agreement, introduction. Public hearing will be held on December twentieth and municipal government works month proclamation reading. And then there will be the final preparing the agenda for next time and the public comment period for things not on this agenda and adjournment.
Are there any adjustments or additions or changes to the agenda? All right. So we will start with my reading, the closed session summary into the meeting. So on November eighth, twenty twenty two, there was a closed session held at eight fifty five P M virtually. This was held under general provisions, article three dash three oh five B one, to discuss the appointment of employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Fourteen, before any contract is awarded or bids are open to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal, a public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process. Those who voted to go into closed session are myself, Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Duckett, Commissioner Hanchett and Commissioner Lot. Everyone was there and voted to go in. Other attendees to the closed session included town administrator Kyle Snyder, police chief David Burst and public works director Darnell Bond. There were no actions or votes taken and personnel, historical committee, legal, along with media and cleaning requests for proposals were discussed. Right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We'll still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
John, would you call the vote, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Hi.
And Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We are moving on to committee reports. And we'll start with Arts Council Committee Report. Commissioner Duckett, do they meet this month?
The Arts Council? No, not that I Kyle, do you have, do you have any additional information?
No, after the holidays, I was gonna reach out to at least the, for to get that back up and running.
Right, I think kind of postponed after the last event, kind of crashed on us, so. I think that would be the consensus anyway, starting twenty twenty. That's it for.
All right. Thank you. Cert Committee, Chief Burst.
Yes, for the month of October, Cert was very busy and it had several events that they participated in for a total of two hundred and five volunteer hours for the month of October and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lot Events Committee.
Yeah, we had on, we've been having, we've been meeting every Thursday of this month except for one Thursday. We, we had to rearrange things. Everything is coming along wonderfully. We have about thirty vendors. We have about thirty vendors. We have, Kyle has the hot chocolate and cookies. We're gonna have tickets where we can give them out. We have the crafts table. And let me see what else. And I'm looking for the update from John regarding the Christmas tree. And that's it. We have another meeting this Wednesday. I mean, wait, the thirtieth at six o'clock. To finalize everything, November thirtieth at six.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hanchett, you want to take the green team?
Yeah, sure. We met, what was it, last week and we're just in the planning phases for getting the committee organized and I'm sorry, what, what was it that we did say? I'm drawing a blank right now.
Yeah, the two of us both went to that meeting and kind of just helped them get structured and understand.
Structure, yes, thank you.
Kind of all the process. So that was a kind of blended meeting with my computer, so.
Yep, so, thank you, Sarah. That, that was it. Thank you.
All right, Green, well, Kyle, do you want to do that update?
Sure, yeah, they were just working gearing up for our legislative session and our asks. I know there's some emails going out, laying down a meeting with the Senator and the state delegation and a few of the commissioners and they're just working through some county stuff as well and just tracking for all the new incoming elected officials in the state and county level.
Thank you. And we don't have a historic right now, so we'll move on to sustainable communities. Commissioner Colbert, do you mind taking that? Because for some reason, unless Linda can get her phone working, give it a quick try and see.
Yeah, I would, I'll wait for, excuse me, Linda, she can jump on because there, there was an intention to have a meeting a couple of weeks ago where there were some technical issues, so it needed to be rescheduled, but Linda may have more insight if, if, if that was able to happen. I wasn't able to attend.
Yeah, she's unmuted, so it may work. Let's try it.
Okay, I think you got it now. Can you hear me?
Excellent. Yes, we can hear you. Yay.
I have a tentative meeting scheduled for the thirtieth. I am in the process of contacting those members. We still have to make sure that that's still a viable time due to the holidays. We might have to cancel this month, but I'm trying not to. So November thirtieth, ten o'clock is the tentative date for the, this month. But I will put forth whether that will happen or not based on how many can attend at this time.
Okay.
With the holidays and people traveling, it's hard.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then we will move into Commissioner Reports. And I will start off kind of I have some stuff from last month and then some stuff from this month, so as we know, we were in the middle of Washington International during the last meeting. It went really super well. There was a county executive reception, that Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Hanchett and Commissioner Lot and I attended. And just, they were really happy that the folks from Washington International, so that's good news. We had a farmer's market, an inaugural farmer's market. It was really successful and the green team is hoping to get more farmers and continue it into the spring. This month, we've really been focused on food bank collections. The Marlboro Church's Food Bank contacted us and all their churches to say the, the shelves were bare, so we've been working with the churches to fill those shelves back up. Kind of, I went to a meeting last night with CSA twenty three for toy drive. Marlboro Church's Food Bank is also trying to coat drive, so we're collecting all the things at town hall for holiday season. Also attended the county executives veterans appreciation lunch event, which was a really good thing to do because I learned about a lot of opportunities for our veterans, for funding assistance and other assistance and some connections and I was able to help connect one of our residents just last week to get some help with some of their veterans' concerns. We also have a resident who received a grant that is what they were eligible for because we're part of the sustainable communities to get a heating unit and energy efficiency done, so that's really exciting. Some annexation negotiation conversations with the lawyers and the lawyers for developments. Prepping for Small Business Saturday, which will be participating in for the first time next Saturday, this Saturday. Working with Better City, like, to give them the list of people to talk to and then the people calling me and saying, hey, this person called me, should I talk to them? And it's municipal government works month, so I, Kyle and I went to a class with Prince George's Community College and spoke to them about, you know, municipal government and I tried to do it throughout the year, but I wanted to make sure something got done in November specifically. So Commissioner Colbert.
Yes, so had the opportunity to attend a number of events since our last town meeting. Like you mentioned, Mayor Franklin, watched the International Horse Show, actually got to go and take my daughter and niece and nephew to the, to the show as well as attend the county executive reception. Also attended the farmer's market, which was a big hit. And I got definitely bought more than I intended to, but that's, that's the nature of doing business. And also the, the fire department, the volunteer fire department had a open house. I was able to take all the kids over there, show them a good time and have them learn about firefighting and whatnot. Also attended an event in Bladensburg on November eleventh on Veterans Day. It was the rededication of the Peace Cross Memorial in Bladensburg. We lended our town flag in support of the city of Bladensburg. Other municipalities came and, and participated in the rededication of that event for Veterans Day. Governor Hogan was there and spoke. There were a number of veterans and members of the community who were, who were there in support of that, so luckily we were able to have a, a presence there. And then attended the, this month's meeting of the Prince George's County Municipal Association where there, which was actually a joint meeting with Montgomery County's Municipal Association, having a number of conversations around green initiatives, kind of development talks and things of that nature, so there's a lot of conversations going on there.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Duckett.
Um, worked with some volunteers, actually, Linda, who is on the line, working on the decorations for the Christmas event, so we were pretty successful in getting most of that taken care of. So, and I think we have a few more things to do with that and then we should be good to go and make sure that Darnell has everything that he needs to get the decorations up, so that would be it for me.
Thank you. I'm excited to see how beautiful you're making it look for Christmas.
So am I.
Commissioner Hanchett.
Um, like Mayor Franklin and Colbert, I went to the county executive function at the Washington Horse Show. Also, I attended the green team meeting. Other than that, this month, I've been busy with work and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lot.
Hi, everyone. So I also attended the county executive meeting at the function at the showplace and the farmer's market and I got some nice leads on, with some vendors, you know, made some connections, got some contacts. Been working with Commissioner Duckett hosting, we've been hosting meetings once a week every Thursday and our next meeting is November thirtieth to finalize all the details for the Christmas event and we're very excited. Thank you.
I am super excited about that event. People keep asking me, I say it's gonna be a surprise for me too because we'd be a quorum if I show up, so it will be fun. So thanks, guys. Um. All right, so we will move on to business and we are basically clearing off a bunch of items we've been discussing for a while but haven't yet voted on, so hopefully this is pretty straightforward. Item number one is the financial legislative package. This is a board vote. John, you need to read this in again, don't you? Do you want me to do it this time?
No, I can do it. It's fine.
Okay.
But it does have to be done. The Town of Upper Marlboro Charter Amendment Resolution Number Zero One Dash Twenty Twenty Two, a charter amendment resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, amending section eighty two dash forty five lapse of appropriations of the charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, thereby authorizing the creation of certain reserve and other non-lapsing funds to be made available for unanticipated or extraordinary expenses that may be incurred or for any other specific intended purpose as authorized by state statute or ordinance and authorizing the board to appropriate funds from any reserve established for unanticipated emergency or extraordinary expenses provided in the budget or other ordinance to meet extraordinary or unanticipated expenditures and providing that reserve funds shall not lapse at the end of the budget year, but shall remain available until appropriated and expended. And amending section eighty two dash fifty six, purchasing and contracts of the charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, to authorize the president of the Town Board of Commissioners to make certain purchases and execute certain contracts at or below ten thousand dollars without board approval and by prescribing that the board may, by super majority vote, may determine a different method of competitive procurement and shall provide by ordinance for certain rules and regulations to conduct competitive procurement through request for proposals, negotiated bids and proposals and other forms Negotiated bids and proposals and other forms of, of purchasing. And by subjecting all contracts and purchasing agree exceeding seventy-five thousand to be approved in writing and made using competitive or other procurement methods and generally relating to contracts, reserve funds and municipal finance.
Okay. Um, are there, again, are there any commissioner questions or comments? Uh, in public, if you have comments or questions, please raise your hand. Hearing no commissioner comments and seeing no raised hands, is there a motion to approve Charter Amendment zero, one dash twenty twenty-two amending section eighty-two dash forty-five?
Yes, so moved.
John, would you call the vote, please?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six procurement. John, do you want to read that one in? Sorry, and ordinance governing and providing rules and regulations regarding purchases and contracts consistent with section eighty-two dash fifty-six of the town charter as amended.
Just getting there.
Did I get it right?
Yeah, you did, but I was gonna, I was just getting there.
It was a sentence.
It's all right.
Um, are there any commissioner comments or public comments? Public, please raise your hand if you have a comment. Hearing no comments and seeing no raised hands, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero six procurement?
So moved.
Second.
John, would you call the vote, please?
Yep. President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Duckett.
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And we'll move on to financial policy on town credit cards, invoice payments and deposits. This doesn't need to be read in because it's a policy. Um, I'm just going to remind everyone that these votes are going so quickly because we've been discussing this for several months. If you're public and wondering why. Um, so commissioners have any comments? Public have any comments? Go ahead and raise your hands or speak up if you're a commissioner. Hearing no comments and seeing no raised hands, is there a motion to approve the financial policy on town credit cards, invoice payments and deposits?
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Second. Second.
All right. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Duckett.
Aye.
Mr. Hanchet.
Aye.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Yeah. We'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero seven historical committee. This ordinance was introduced at the October. Meeting. Are there any, oh, John, go ahead and read it.
I'll read it real quick. Session regular town meeting was introduced on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. An ordinance to amend ordinance twenty twenty twelve dash zero two establishing, establishing a historical committee for the town of Upper Marlboro.
And Kyle, if you could just review what this does.
Sure. Um, so that's pretty much brings the historical committee in line with, um, a lot of the other town committees under ordinance twenty nineteen, um, two. Yeah, I think that's pretty much the gist of it.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any commissioner comments? Public, if you have a comment, please raise your hand and we'll call on you after commissioners. Okay. Hearing no comments and seeing no raised hands, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero seven?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call the vote. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Did we lose Commissioner Lot?
I heard her. I just heard her say aye. Commissioner Lot.
Oh, she's breaking up.
I know. Commissioner Lot.
She just dropped off, but it sounded like she did say aye twice.
I did.
I did hear it too.
Okay. They're hard to confuse. So, okay.
Okay.
All right, so. Okay. So we'll move on to the parking legislative package. Um, this is two pieces. Um, and we'll start with resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five.
Okay, the town of Upper Marlboro Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five session regular town meeting dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. A resolution authorizing setting of fines for parking violations, associated fees and rates for the increase of fines for certain town citations.
Kyle, do you want to just give a quick overview about this section?
Absolutely. Uh, so this is, uh, one of the two parking resolutions before the board. As everyone's aware, we did not move forward with the parking ordinance. Um, when we do codification, we'll make some of those housekeeping updates. Um, at that point, there was no need to amend the parking, um, ordinance at this time. So pretty much that's increases all the fees. Um, and the fines for parking rates right now, a lot of them are twenty-five and fifty dollars. The county just increased theirs to thirty-five and sixty dollars. So we, uh, did the same thing, stay in line to minimize confusion. Um, there's a slightly different format than what was at the work session. Attorney Best kind of revised the chart and, uh, added all the specific sections as you see in, um, the parking organs. So that's a bit of a change, but other than that, um, the fines are pretty much the same thing as we've discussed for the past couple of weeks.
I like the chart that Attorney Best made. It's my comment. Does anyone else have comments? Public, raise your hands if you have comments. Hearing no comment. Oh, hold on, we haven't raised hands.
Yeah. Uh, I have to find the section again, but there is, um, one of the reasons for impoundment, I believe is missing a um, let me find it. Or am I in the wrong? Maybe I'm in the wrong trap. Um, there's, there is a I'm, I'm sorry, I might hit my three minutes because I need, I need to find the page again on my phone. Um, in, in one of the ones nineteen-two A or something like the reasons for impoundment and one of them is something about uh, three occurrences within eight days, if it's eighteen months, eighteen years.
Eighteen. Oh, I see what you're saying. A piece of information there.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, we'll fill that in when we make the motion. Thank you. Okay, and Chief, that's supposed to be eighteen months, correct?
I need to see it. Um, so I don't want to say, is it eighteen months?
Yeah, and I think the organs clarifies it, but yeah, it shouldn't be fixed here. So pretty much if there's a, uh, vehicle with three or more outstanding parking citations and it's not Maryland tag, um, it can get impounded. It's something we very rarely do, but it can get impounded or, uh, booted.
That sounds about right.
So I'll phrase the motion. So is there a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-five with the amendment to include in the chart under nine A two eighteen month. Period.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Can you call our vote, John?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hand.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And we'll move on to resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six.
All right, Town of Upper Marlboro Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six session regular town meeting date November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlboro to change and adopt parking meter rates.
Okay, Kyle, can you just give us a quick overview?
Absolutely. Um, this has seen a couple.
Sorry, specify what it does. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mary. It says a couple of changes over the past couple of weeks as we've discussed it. So as it stands right now, um, what this does is the biggest thing is the meters on Main Street, Elm Street, Pratt Street, Water Street, Judges Drive, um, instead of being two dollars fifty cents, twenty-four hours a day, seven days, or six days a week with Sunday free. It is now going to be two dollars and fifty cents per hour, Monday through Friday, six AM to five fifty-nine PM. And then after hours on Monday through Friday, it's going to be a dollar, um, per hour. And then, um, it's, I do have one amendment for section one. It's the hourly fee shall also be waived all day Sunday, not all day Saturday and Sunday. So there's just one minor correction there. So that's the street meter rates. Pretty much we have a one dollar an hour rate that's cheaper for all the businesses. And to help encourage people come shop downtown and that one dollar an hour is on track with a lot of the regional, um, uh, medium cost for home street parking. And it still keeps that two dollar fifty cent competitive during courthouse hours. Um, Governor Boo Drive meters do not change. That is staying the same. But it does also change the off-street parking rates to a dollar an hour. And then free after hours.
Um, I'm sorry, I thought I put this in one of the modifications, but, um, didn't we say until ten PM? Like, so your one dollar, sorry, in the draft that I'm looking at in front of me is different from what I remember. It just says.
And I have a question about that as well.
Um, and I don't know if that's because what I was looking at in this printed copy. Do you know, do you see what I'm seeing?
Yeah, that could be. I know there's some discussion about that. So if that's what the board wants to do, you just make the motion and it's a dollar an hour from six PM to ten PM. Then after ten PM, it's free.
Okay. Yeah.
I know there's some discussion about the two dollars fifty cents up until ten PM as well. But if that's the, if you guys want to do the one dollar from six to ten.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I like to say something. This is Commissioner Lot. I thought we were trying to help the businesses and to, to get rid of the, uh, monies. Get rid of the monies during the, um, after hours.
Right.
Yeah, because that's what's going to help the businesses. And I thought that we brought that up, but we didn't have an in-depth conversation, but I also brought up in our conversation that, um, it was proposed that you know, that, um, if there was a issue that we just charge a fee. Um, a flat monthly rate, you know, um, to offset any of the costs or offset any of the money that we're not receiving. But, but then again, how much are we making now? Um, and, you know, so we can kind of balance off what we're going to be missing if we decide to, um, get rid of the fees after hours. Because we want to help the businesses and I, and you know, we want to continue to promote them. But if they're having problems after hours with this hat bringing in customers and stuff like that because of parking, I think that's something that we really should look at.
So, um, the discussion we had at the work session was that we wanted to balance this desire to help our businesses with, but not hurt them accidentally. So what happens and I don't, I walked through town on Sunday and every parking spot was occupied on Sunday when you don't pay. Um, so why we came to the dollar an hour was it reduces the parking cost, sort of a compromise. It reduces a parking cost. But it makes you pay something to park on the street. So that means that everyone won't just park on their, the street and leave their car there. Um, so that, because if we don't charge anything, then maybe there's no parking because people who you know, are visiting the library or parking there, or if people are visiting friends that live close by, they park there. I don't know what, you know, the library's not open on Sunday. I was floored with how full. And so it made me think, hey, these businesses are going to have trouble with their, their patrons finding parking on Sunday. Uh, and so that's why we came to that conclusion. My dollar.
Well, who is we? We didn't discuss that.
So we did. Um, we discussed it at the work session. Um, and I believe the, the last two work sessions, we discussed it at.
We did discuss the parking meters, but I don't recall, um, coming up with a spend that they'll be paying a dollar the reduction, the fee, um, to reduce the fee. I didn't, I don't recall us speaking about that. I know that we were talking about trying to get rid of it just to help the businesses. I don't recall. And it could, it, you know, it got, could have, we could have talked about that, but I don't remember that part.
I think you were not at the last work session, Commissioner Lot. Is that correct? My memory?
Okay, but then that would make sense.
Okay, that's, I think that's where that confusion was.
Hey, because I'm like, I don't remember. Okay.
So at the last work session, the board gave me the direction for the dollar an hour after, um, some hearty discussion. The, uh, the commissioner's president asked me to kind of draft it up with the dollar and reduce rate afterwards.
Okay.
And then, um, we do have the option. We're going to talk to the businesses again. They can, um, pay for validating parking. So that it would be free to the, their customers to pay. Um, they'd be able to hand out codes to their customers. Um, that's something we've offered out before.
Um, okay. But it doesn't sound like a bad idea. So they're, they can provide free parking to their customers. That doesn't sound like a bad. Okay, cool. Thank you. So clarify.
And Commissioner Hanchet did not, like, he had a different opinion than Commissioner Duckett, Commissioner Colbert and I. So that's why he's expressing his opinion and that's what we're all here to do.
Yeah, I just wanted free parking at night. That's the way I felt, but, um, as you get the good compromise. Thank you.
And also there was some kind of parking, I mean, about, there was some conversation about signage as well. So to make sure that's identifiable. Okay, I was, I'm on board with you, Commissioner Hatchett. On this one.
Um, and Chief first, what, after this vote, however it goes, um, if, if it passes, then maybe you can send out this sign preview so everyone knows what's coming.
And did, how are we going to figure out the passage that we can give out, like the codes or whatnot for the businesses? How, how will that be handled, distributed? Allotted?
That would be through our, uh, parking vendor IPS. The, um, they're the ones who, um, they're who bought the parking meters and run our parking enforcement. So there's a parking permit, um, kind of module we can add on as well with, which we've been talking about because we're managing a lot of parking permits with Governor and Boo Drive. Um, so we'll start that discussion with them and I'll probably bring it to the board for, uh, approval. Because we can give the businesses an even more discounted rate. It could be fifty cent an hour if the business buys the, um,
The other fifty cents. Oh, cool. Oh, that's awesome. All right. Thank you.
Uh, and there's a lot of deals and promos, like buy a hundred hours, get twenty-five free. So it's, it's pretty liberal of what the town can set those rates for the, uh, to help the businesses.
And we'll hopefully have that coming up early in the new year, once.
That sounds really good.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for all your work on that, Kyle.
Oh, you're welcome. It's a team effort.
All right. So I'm gonna, oh, is there any public comment? Okay. I am going to frame this motion to say that is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six? with the modification that the meters will go from six PM to ten PM? Monday through Friday, Kyle, or through Saturday, am I supposed to say?
Um, the parking rate.
Sorry, Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday, really. Yes. That's what all day Saturday is going to have to mean. We'll have.
All day Saturday is one dollar now.
Yeah. All right, okay. So let me retry that again. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six with the modification to change until five fifty-nine PM to until ten o'clock PM?
Summer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
And I'll call the vote. President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Nay.
Commissioner Lot.
You don't have to go, yes.
I know, I know. I'm going to say no.
All right. Motion carries.
All right, we will move on to Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, snowplow and assembly.
All right, the Town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, session regular town meeting dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro approving agreement which will provide cleaning services up to the town of, oh, this is a cleaning.
Oh.
No, no, I think, did you say snowplow?
Yeah, I can read it. I think I had.
No, twenty is this one.
Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve the purchase of snowplow and salt spreader along with installation.
I have that right here. Hold on. We have snowplow. Hold on. There it is, snowplow. I jumped too far, I guess. Okay, so.
That's good.
Are there comments or questions among the, well, actually, we should let Director Bond give us an overview because we only talked about this at the work session.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Um, just a quick overview. Um, earlier uh, this year, the board uh, approved twenty-five hundred to fix the uh, odor salt spreader that we have. However, the, now that the manufacturer is actually starting to make parts as far as like wrapping up for the season again, the quote is coming in higher than anticipated. And the um, company color equipment that we have that uh, actually services and would be the one fixing the equipment strongly sort of advises against it because of how many uh, problems this unit has, not just with ours. So what they're proposing is uh, a new spreader, um, just like the one that we have uh, that we purchased last year. Um, that we will have two fully outfitted uh, vehicles. Um, also in addition to this, if the board agrees, we're looking to do um, the snowplow uh, attachment for the front, and this will also be switching it from the uh, dump body truck to the truck that was uh, purchased earlier this spring, uh, truck three, six, four, um, which is another pickup truck, which is a little easier to maneuver. Um, still has a pretty good capacity. And I will take any questions if anyone has it.
I have a quick question. This is Commissioner Lot. Um, good evening. Um, so you said that we approved the um, the cost to get the um, snowplow repaired last year. So how come we didn't move forward or did we? Correct me if I'm wrong. Did we move forward? We're getting it fixed or we did?
We. We moved forward with uh, attempting to order the parts. The parts were on backorder because the manufacturer, they actually wait until this time of year to actually start manufacturing parts for their snowplows. Yeah, and their snow equipment. Um, when those quotes came in and it was time to order those parts, the parts cost more than the quote that we were given last year. So that's what prompted um, you know, for them to have uh, this discussion with me as far as um, not about the, you know, the issues with the unit. Um, I definitely know the issues with the unit and they weren't all that confident that that would fix all of the issues with the unit. So that is kind of what prompted us to sort of move in this direction.
Okay, and can we save that snowplow, can we save that snowplow so we can have parts? Uh, if one of the other equipments go down or do we have a warranty? How does that work?
The, do you, do you mean the one that we initially wanted to fix?
Okay, um, now I was saying, um, can we save this snowplow that's not working properly for parts? You know, are the parts usable possibly down the line? And if we can, um, that'd be great. But the ones that, the new ones that we are purchasing, um, will we have a warranty on those?
This uh, the new one being purchased uh, does come uh, with a warranty. It is a limited warranty because there's what's the best way to put it? Um, there's a lot of different scenarios that could void the warranty. Um, simply because we're dealing with, you know, highly corrosive material. Um, so you know, something like it not being clean property properly could void it. But it does come with a warranty. The old one, um, it's a different manufacturer. It's quite a bit older. Um, I don't see any parts that are um, interchangeable, you know, as far as like uh, you know, in the, in the event that one of these uh, salt spreaders goes down. Um, however, I mean, as of right now, we are holding on to it in the event that, you know, they come out with a different design as far as fixing it. Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
No, I had a.
Okay, um, I hope that answered your uh, your, your question, Commissioner Lot.
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Are there any other commissioner questions? And I will say just public, put your hand up now while we're looking for those last questions.
I, I did have a question. Uh, Director Bond, can you, can you tell me what the impact is on your budget by moving to this, you know, procuring basically a new system for lack of a better, better word rather than replacing the old parts? What is that? Does that take away from some other things you, you were looking to order later on in the year? Or what's kind of the, the impact there?
Um, as far as um, the things that we had planned to order, uh, well, to get earlier in the year, those things have sort of been sidelined anyway. However, this is um, one of the things that I foresee, especially if we have a bad winter, is going to be the most important, especially uh, right now. Um, we're looking to pay for uh, to pay for this out of um, the unused salary for the position that has not been filled as of yet. So it's not a, it's not a big uh, financial contribution uh, that would sort of be unforeseen and, you know, dipping into other uh, line items or anything like that. Um. Yeah, it's it, at this time, it was unforeseen that the quotes will come in higher. However, um, having that unused uh, salary is helping to sort of ease this blow.
Thank you.
And keep in mind, um, just Commissioner Lot again, keep in mind, we are um, putting contingencies in place, so we will have money for emergencies. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, um. I don't see any public with raised hands. I'm going to ask if there is a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Hi.
Mr. Lot.
Hi.
Motion carry. Thank you.
We'll move on to Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, which is the cleaning contract.
All right, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, session regular town meeting dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. A resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro approving agreement which will provide cleaning services to the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Director Bond, can you take us through this, please?
No problem here. Um, at the work session, uh, the board asked um, if we could sort of have a um, a conversation with the two leading uh, cleaning companies. Um, and they had a few questions as far as like what their final monthly uh, charge would be by annual deep clean costs and things of that nature. Um, so reached out to Brad Core and uh, a claim who we're currently using as of now. Um, the the proposal for a claim, uh, I believe the first proposal we got was for nineteen hundred uh, a month, monthly charge. Um, after speaking with them, they were, I'm not sure why, but they were under the impression that the cleanings were going to go to two buildings four times uh, per week. Um, after the clarification, that number came down to eleven hundred. Um, Brad Core uh, stayed at uh, thirteen sixty-five. The biannual deep clean calls for Brad Core, that's cut pretty much is, um, they said what's covered in their deep clean is covered under the um, additional services that we actually asked them to add into the list. Um, they said anything additional that is sort of outside of that scope would just be billed at the um, billed at an hourly rate of twenty-four thirty-five, uh, just like their emergency clean cost. Um, for a claim, their biannual deep clean came in at ten ninety. Um, and they said that some of those services are covered under the additional scope, but they are uh, the additional services, but there are some things that are slightly different. Um, for emergency clean calls, again, Brad Core, uh, they took the hourly rate route of twenty-four thirty-five. Um, a claim, they came in at a hundred and twenty dollars. That is uh, that is their minimum and it includes four hours of service. For pre and post-event rate, Brad Core came at, came in at a hundred dollar minimum. That includes two hours of service. A claim came in at a hundred and twenty dollar minimum, which again includes four hours of service. For uh, I asked them to sort of think of uh, throw in uh, sanitization uh, just in case anyone uh, as far as staff or visitors, um, any, if we had a, you know, a COVID case or anything like that. Uh, Brad Core said that it would be less than two hundred per building. Um, a claim came in again at the one hundred and twenty dollar minimum, but this time it was plus uh, thirty percent uh, markup for um, for different materials that they would have to use and uh, the materials that they would have to dispose of immediately after, which puts us at a minimum of one fifty-six. Uh, I did a recommended contingency for both uh, a thousand dollars, um, at a thousand dollars for Brad Core that gives us uh, twenty point five, twenty and a half man hours for two people or uh, ten two-hour minimums, which uh, their emergency clean calls, pre, post-event, sanitization would be under. So we would be covered for uh, uh, ten of those services. Um, a claim that came in at thirty-two man hours for two people or eight four-hour minimums uh, to cover the same sorts of things. Um, and I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Um, this is Commissioner Duckett. Were you, um, and thank you for that. Um, were you able to um, get any referrals from other clients regarding either of the the, the contractor?
Yes, both of these companies actually have quite a few uh, county uh, contacts. I know Brad Core does the um, does the courthouse, they do the, they do the jail. And um, I don't have it in front of me, but there were like uh, two other buildings around. Um, I know from Chief that a claim does uh, the Fleet Services Building uh, for the county. And they also came with a few other references as well.
Okay, and the one that was closest to it being in town on a regular basis was the not the, the other one, right?
I believe, uh, well, the, of course, Brad Core, since they're right at the courthouse and they also have a person over at the um, what is that? At the uh, daycare next door to public works. However, with the uh, amount of county contacts that they, uh, contracts that they both have, I would imagine uh, both of them are uh, pretty easily accessible.
Okay, so I know that initially one had kind, one mentioned that they were able to like come right on over or attend to anything in any, either of our areas if something for an emergency sake. Like they could just really get to it really quick. I can't remember which one said that.
That, that was Brad Core.
Um, I'm just going to pop in because Director Bond was out and when we had the problem with the other cleaning company, we did call a claim and say, hey, we need someone to clean temporarily and how fast can you do it? And they were like, we can do it as soon as you're ready for us. So I just want to let you know that they were also ready to go quickly.
Okay, and so uh, last question um, outside of pricing, uh, which is, I'm looking at everything, but which one did you, which one did you feel more comfortable with, um, Director Bond? From your experience?
I mean, they, they, they both have uh, attributes and qualities that I like. Brad Core, um, of course, they took the time out to come and meet with us, but technically a claim did as well while I was out. Um, I'm, I'm sort of leaning towards a claim, not only because of price, but because they're already in town hall. Um, from my understanding, staff is completely happy with their services and I don't want to disrupt that. And for something that could very well be a maybe, and I don't want us to, you know, have this have to have this conversation before the contract is up. So um, uh, at, at this point, I'm, I'm recommending a claim. But I don't think I would have a problem with either one of these uh, contractors.
Okay, so much.
If I may, I'll say I'll second the acclaim because they are doing a excellent job and they did come in short notice when we did have um, our COVID issue back in twenty twenty. Uh, they did come in and take care of the buildings and it was no delay. Um, the gentleman was very receptive to what we asked. And like I said before, he even cleaned our police cars for us. And uh, we've had no issues with them so far. And this has been almost, they kind of, they did the cleaning before they were actually our vendor. I'll say that. So we paid them outside of what we were planning, paying the original cleaning company because they came in and did specialized work for us during those COVID periods.
Which is why we thought of them when we needed the emergency service. So just notice how that happened.
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, are there any, I don't know what happened to, there we go. If public has any comments, go ahead and raise your hands. Um. Any other commissioners have comments? Questions, et cetera. And there's nothing from the public. Um. So. So I guess, so we want to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-eight. I guess I'd like to, before I phrase the, before I phrase the motion, what's the general feeling on which company we should go with?
I'm for a claim. I mean, I feel like, of course, they are, are able to been, see what the cleaning is and receive benefits from it and if they're comfortable with that, that, that's fine with me.
And I'm swayed by staff's opinion that they're happy, so I'm also with that. Is that, do, are the commissioners okay with that? No one's raising a hand?
I'm gonna go with the staff decision.
I'm, I'm sure the other company is good. It just is the way things worked out. So, okay, so I'm gonna say, is there-
As long as the staff is happy.
Is there a resolution to approve, or sorry, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-eight? Cleaning contract and award the contract to a claim.
All right, President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchit.
Hi.
Mister Lot.
Hi.
Motion approved. Motion carries.
We'll go on to the media contract, which is resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
All right, resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-nine session regular meeting dated November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. A resolution, resolution of the town of Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro renewing a consultant agreement with Feldman Communication Strategies LLC to continue to serve as the town's media relations firm contract.
So we put out the RFP, we only got one reply back, that was from our current media person. So we pretty much kind of evolved the contract from a monthly retainer rate fifteen hundred, whether we used them or not, and kind of moved over to more of an hourly fee, and we've already seen a large cost savings for that hourly fee versus the monthly retainer, which is good. So if the board passes resolution, we'll still be working on the contract and fine tuning some of the duties and responsibilities. Especially when it comes to social media stuff, so.
Are there any commissioner questions, comments? Public, raise your hand if you have questions or comments.
Yeah, that, that was actually my one question Kyle just addressed. So the, the items outlined in the description of services there. They're not self-directed by the consultant in this, like Kyle, you or us as the board are giving them direction on which activities we would want them to pursue at what time, correct?
Correct, yeah, it's not a, they don't automatically promise. There's a very rare cases where they'll reach out like, hey, look, saw you're doing this. Would you consider a press release or something? But most of the times, nine times out of ten, it's us prompting them to move forward, yeah, so they're not freelancing or anything.
And then, then kind of a larger discussion for another time, and I think we may have talked about this in a, in a different meeting, but it have, maybe we should consider some type of vendor management or vendor rating system that we can use, just like I said, not just specifically related to this, but also with the cleaning contract, we just went through another vendors that we have, just so that we kind of keep it, keep a good sense of how, you know, if we're, if we're getting bang for our buck in these, in these contracts, so.
Absolutely.
If there are any comments, there's no raised hands, so is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-nine?
Second.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Commissioner Duckett.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanchit.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Lot.
Hi, sorry.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to the resident assistance package. We discussed this at the work session. John, do you want to just review the board?
The makeup of the board would consist of, of course, one representative from each of the departments of the town would also include a community member as well as a member of the church. Would be the makeup of the board. It would be up to the Board of Commissioners to decide if, if the resident would apply a second time to receive funding, would be up to you all at your discretion to decide that. And anyone that comes forth with rental assistance or utility assistance, of course, that assistance would be applied directly to the utility or to the landlord and money would never ever touch the, the applicant.
So we had kind of talked about this at the work session about having all right, we had talked about this at the work session about having a few residents who would be willing to serve on the board and each of the churches having someone, so when, when an application comes in, we can just send out an email saying, is there, can a representative meet at one of X three, you know, three times and whoever gets back would be the representative that, at that time. We had said we would nominate residents. I don't know, I, I found two residents. Evelyn Stevens had said she was willing to do it again and Sandra George said she would be willing to do it. I don't know if you guys have any other residents who are willing to represent? Do, do we want to move forward in just saying this is how we'll compose it with those two residents for now? And if you guys have other residents to nominate, we can add them.
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Same.
Good.
And John brought up something because we do have a resident who is wondering if it's, if they haven't because the four hundred dollars is the cap, so I guess the question is, can they have more than one set of assistance if their circumstances warrant it up to four hundred dollars instead of being awarded one time, they can be awarded twice up to four hundred dollars? What does everyone think about that?
I think if the money allows and there's nobody else requesting, then the board of people that side should be able to decide that. I mean, if nobody's applying for it, someone needs it twice, then we should be able to give it to them. That can be a case by case decision.
We'll hand over the, or you're suggesting we would hand the authority over to the award board if they want to award more than once based on available funds.
Right. If, let's say one person needs it twice and there's nobody else applying, then why not help them? I mean, what else? Let's say we can only give them four hundred, they need eight hundred, nobody else is applying, then we can make that decision.
You're saying up, not just the number of times, but also possible funds. What does everyone else think about that?
For me, so you were saying up to four hundred, so each individual can receive up to four hundred. Up to four hundred within a, and then within a year. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, so I mean, I think that the person should be able to receive up to their full amount, however, it is based on a rotation. So if there's someone else that's in need, then they would just have to fall back in line for that. But I don't feel like they should receive more than what is allotted simply because there's there, because I think sometimes that can, that helps to foster that reliability on the town to step in to provide those resources and, you know. I just think it's, it's assistance, not, you know.
Isn't the issue also that we're not getting a lot of applications right now? So the money just sitting there.
So I'm gonna kind of clarify because the, so the situation that I am aware of is a temporary situation that is affecting multiple months' worth of bills, if that makes sense, but will not continue to do so long-term. So I don't know if that matter, but I just wanted to explain why I was asking that.
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but this is, it, it seems like I don't even want to say it's a one-off because you just don't know. I might just think that we should be careful in how we, how we address this because we could be fostering behavior. So, for me, I'm just, I, I think it's, it's fair that they are able to receive up to that four hundred dollars per year and if, and, and that means like, so if their water bill is like, whatever, something bursts in the house and it's, you know, two fifty, then, you know, if they want to get back in line for the remaining, they can if they actually need, you know, more resources, if, you know. But I don't think.
Yeah. That was what I was talking about.
Sorry, you gotta remember, it's not easy to get. You have a lot of documentation that you need to prove. I mean, that's all, I'm I'm just saying that if somebody needs it, need the twice, that's fine.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna kind of just to wrangle us into like decision mode. Is the, how, who feels four hundred, stick with the four hundred dollar cap, but you can come back until you hit that cap? And who feels you should be able to double depending on your situation? Then I can frame a motion.
Well, can I make a suggestion real quick?
Oh, sorry.
So I think I get what everybody is trying to say. One of the things is that we also like Commissioner Duckett is trying to say, make sure that people don't abuse it is, okay, you give them up to the four hundred the first time. And if they wait and there's nobody else doing it, say six months later they ask for money again. Well, if we haven't given out any money, then we should consider a cap. How many times can you ask for up to the four hundred dollars per year? And if that's two times, then that's it, because somebody could not need the money the first six months of the year, and then like you said, you get a water pipe that burst in the winter time and the money is just still sitting there, so we could possibly help somebody twice, but I think we should at least put a timeframe around it saying, okay, you get one initial and then if nothing happens, then you could possibly get another one. Say you have to wait thirty days or sixty days before you can get the next batch, just in case somebody has an emergency in between that timeframe. You don't want, like I said, give somebody eight hundred dollars right off the bat and then six months later to ask it for another eight hundred dollars. So that's just suggesting kind of helping.
I think Commissioner Duckett was saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, was like four hundred dollars per a twelve-month period.
That's what I was saying. I mean, if that is the rule, if that is what is allotted, the four hundred dollars. I mean, is that a rule that we're making is four hundred dollars or is that-
It was a rule, yeah, it was a rule we made. And I think what, what Chief Burris is suggesting is a compromise between Commissioner Hanchet and Commissioner Duckett, which is to say make it four hundred dollars per six-month period. But again, so there's two other commissioners, so I just want to hear what they have to say and then that'll help us make a decision.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm actually more in line with Chief Burris's way of thinking on this. I think if we're, if we have the money available to, to Commissioner Duckett's point, we don't want to foster an environment where, you know, any single, or every single emergency, someone, you know, may be running to the town for these funds, but if we're, if we have the money available, if we are able to help residents, then we should have some flexibility in that.
Okay. Commissioner Lot.
So I feel like I feel like, you know, we should be able to help the town residents, but we don't want, I don't think that they should have money twice in one year. I think every year we should have a, like a, a cutoff point. Like if it's eight hundred dollars for the year and you only use two hundred, then you can come back. But if we have a cap at eight hundred, yeah, you can come back, you can get back in the line of rotation, but we need a cap. We can't have people coming back and forth and back and forth in the same year unless, unless they have not exhaust the cap. Now, we say eight hundred is our max for the year and the person can get back in line, that's fine. But if, if we're not doing that, then we definitely, I, I think the system will be sort of abused. Because yes, instead of going to a family member, if you know the town is going to help you, you know, and we don't, we don't want that. We don't want that. The, what a town is going to help you, so boom. So if you, in that one year, you spend your four hundred dollars or your eight hundred dollars, then that's it. Even if we have the money sitting there, unless your house burned down, then I'm not going to be sympathetic to that. You know what I mean? Because you, 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 this is people here, that we're dealing with people and human nature and people, people are going to be people and if they can get the money, they're going to get it. And we need to make sure that we are securing, you know, securing the money and giving it out properly. And having a cap, I think is very important. Thank you.
Can I offer a sort of alternate compromise? Which is to say, stick, our, our, our cap is four hundred dollars per year. However, an additional two hundred dollars can be awarded for specific extenuating circumstances such as fire, flood damage, like natural disaster type thing?
That, that, that makes sense. That makes sense. Like if your house burned down, you may need, of course, you're gonna, the town wants to rally together and help you and and maybe we can even, you know, try to raise money for them or donate, you know, ask, ask other town members to, residents to donate. But I think that if you have that firm cap and, and put the contingency in there, like if there is a a dire emergency, then we can, we can assist more, but we don't need to overextend.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the real issue is availability, if it's you know.
The problem is no one's, no one's asking for it really, even though it's there. I don't know.
When you say that, how many residents would we technically, could we hope at any given time?
Yeah, we did that math originally, which is why we came up with the four hundred, but I don't remember what the math was, but then no one applied for it. And then a resident had a hardship and I let them know it was available and then they applied for it. I think that the situation becomes, not all residents are thinking, I had a hardship, let me contact the town and see what help I can get. And they should be because there's lots of good help out there from the state and the county that can piggyback on. So, you know, even when we're not able to help, a lot of times we can help by finding them, the assistance they need. But, um, yeah, sorry.
No, sorry, I cut you off.
I guess unless we know people who are having the hardship, they're not thinking to come forward, I guess, despite advertising.
My thought is that, I mean, yeah, they should be able to go to and receive the benefits, you know, if they're there. But yeah, we are in a recession. I know you said that most people don't think like, hey, if this is going on with my bills, maybe I should just see, you know, if the town, once we advertise it or however, I don't even know, because of course, no one's asking for it now, but if we have that in some information that goes out to the town, like we have emergency assistance program, yes, people will start to, to tap into that and they're going to start asking. I just think that, and that's totally fine. If they need it, they need it. I would want someone to help me if I needed it. But I still feel like there just needs to be a cap because I agree with that suggestion you made in terms of that money being at whatever the cap is and then the additional monies that they can apply for, for any emergency, like natural disasters, as you mentioned, a fire, flood or something of that nature. A tree fell on my house, you know, some, those things, those are emergency really like I need money like right away cuz someone helped me. But if you, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. You may just decide you wanna do shoe shopping and not pay your bills that month. I pay your water bill and you fuck. I mean, people do that. People are irresponsible. Let's just be real.
So, okay, so I'm what I'm gonna suggest we do is um take this public comment, then I'm gonna phrase this as a motion, and if it doesn't pass, we'll just keep rephrasing the motion till we get to where we all agree. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Cuz I think we're close.
Let me just ask I'm very concerned about seniors for sure.
Yeah.
So seniors are most are on a, you know, budget limited income, so. Um, and I know, you know, there's a list. But is there gonna be a, an opportunity for, like if there's a senior that needs help? And you know, they're in a fixed income and they really need help. And there's someone else that has applied and yet they need help too, but this senior is, you know. They, yes, priority. I mean, is there something that we consider in there because I'm really concerned about the elderly?
I'll put that in the motion cuz I agree with you. And I just wanna let everyone know, this has been advertised since, I wanna say like May or June, John. So it's been advertised in the landings on the website. Um, we take it with us when we go to community conversations. So and and we people still haven't really applied for it. So just to kind of ease everyone's concerns on that front.
That's a good thing. That means we're in a pretty, pretty good economy in the area. At least people are working. Let's just say that. So that's a good thing, but.
Uh, okay, so let's take the public comment and then we'll try the motion and see if it passes.
Hi, Joe Urclay, Old Marlboro Pike. Because have, I I try and start over. Um, I believe it's going to be very difficult to come up with every last contingency and plan for it. Visery group reviewing what's going on. And so it might make sense to give some of this power to them to say, look, you know, four hundred dollars a year should automatically be accepted, whether it's in one allocation or or multiple. But the board does have the ability to go over that amount, whether it's, you know, it requires a unanimous vote of the board of, you know, this group or something like that to be able to override it up to six hundred or eight hundred dollars or whatever you choose. Um, that might you know, keep you from having to worry about every last possibility now. And then should someone start abusing it, then you can change what the policies are.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the resident assistance package at a cap of four hundred dollars per year? With a two hundred dollar additional for fire, flood damage, natural disaster, or other major cer- major emergency determined by the award board. And that the award board shall currently include residents Sandra George and Evelyn Stevens.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
All right, President Franklin.
Hi.
Commissioner Colbert.
Hi.
Mr. Duckett.
Hi.
Mr. Hanchet. Mr. Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, so we shall move on to the service lane dumpster agreement. We all stuck about this at the work session. Kyle, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so as discussed, um, there's the issue with these dumpsters that are sitting on private or public property placed there by a commercial property owner downtown. They service a few of our restaurants, I'm knows Marlboro Grill and some other businesses. And there's really no other great place to place those dumpsters. We've gotten a lot of complaints from service lane. Probably starting in June of twenty uh twenty-two, when the dumpsters were really over full trash and trash thrown on the ground, vultures everywhere. Um, so after some discussion back forth at the attorney, see how it works. It was decided that we could move forward with a uh a joint uh support letter between the town and the post office, who we co-own the land, um, or we have a shared use agreement on it. Um, to allow the property owner to place three dumpsters there, granted that they enclose it with a six foot privacy fence that locks um and keep it in good repair and pay the town a small maintenance fee. Um, because public works has to go through and clean up the litter and stuff. And move forward that way. So that is uh what's before the board is is the letter authorizing the mayor to move forward with that. And it should solve the residents' complaints.
And a lot allows us to find for
Correct.
Continued problems.
They don't lock the gates or keep them in bad repair and they're still trash. We have uh enforcement options built in.
Are there questions, um, comments? Public, go ahead and raise your hand while we're discussing. Hearing no comments and seeing no raised hands, is there a motion to approve the service lane dumpster agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
President Franklin.
Hi.
Mr. Colbert.
Hi.
Mr. Duckett.
Hi.
Mr. Hanchet.
Hi.
Mr. Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We'll move on to our introductions, which is, we're gonna start with ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, which is amending twenty nineteen dash oh two. Um, this document that you have actually has the like crossouts in large font text, which is not what we had at the work session, so that I'll let um, John, do you need to read it into the record for introduction?
I do. I'll read it in the record and then Kyle can speak about it. All right, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero eight, session regular town meeting introduced November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. An ordinance to amend ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero two to authorize and provide for the appointment and governance of all committees and other bodies not otherwise prescribed by the charter or other law to provide for certain practices, procedures, and governance of such bodies by prescribing and providing for the membership creation and composition of certain bodies by providing for certain appointment procedures, compensation and budgeting, terms of appointment and removal, conduct of meetings, appointed liability, and indemnification communications, and generally relating to the practices, procedures, and requirements for appointed bodies of the town of Upper Marlboro.
So this uh ordinance was drafted um and reviewed and pretty much it's uh make some minor changes to the committees um ordinance based off some of the concerns that came out of the historical committee um discussions. Um, it goes by like the amount of people being appointed to a committee and um just highlights and clears up some of the confusion. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of little stuff. Um, clarifies like if town property is purchased by uh committee using town funds, it just clarifies that, yes, that's town property. And uh puts more stuff about like communication from town or town committees, email or social media accounts and stuff like that. Let's think about maybe twelve edits.
It addresses a couple of concerns we've had with more than one committee. Just so that's clear to public. Um, are there any commissioner comments, questions, changes? We'll talk about a work session again too, so no pressure. We do have one hand raised, so let's take that public comment.
Hi, Joe Urclay, Old Marlboro Pike. So the first comment is in section three, item C. Uh, right at the end, I believe that by the is doubled, uh maybe removed by the committee by the by the appointing authority. Um, and then I have to ask that as section one B removes the unless otherwise prescribed by charter ordinance or resolution clause, um, what was the point in passing twenty-two oh five is this would then now apply to the historical committee?
Uh, oh, sorry, that was advised by the town attorney to pass that to, it was what was needed to move this, move the historic committee under this.
Go ahead.
All right. All right, so that's introduced and we'll discuss it at the work session if anyone has more comments and hopefully pass it at the November meeting. And we'll move on to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, we're quoting in town administrator Snyder, take it away.
All right, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, session regular town meeting introduced November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro granting a renewal of the cable franchise to Comcast of Maryland LLC and authorizing a franchise agreement and generally relating to cable television.
So this ordinance kind of came out of the blue, not our fault. Um, so the county as a whole has been coordinating with all the municipalities um to renegotiate a countywide Comcast franchise agreement. Uh, the town um has had a franchise agreement with Comcast in the past. I think the latest one was nineteen ninety-nine. Um, so it's been kind of expired, but keeps getting extended. So this is finally, uh, they've reached the point. Um, and so all twenty-seven municipalities and Prince George's County are in on this. Um, so pretty much it's staying the same. Um, all the fees and fines and um, everything's pretty much the same. Uh, moving forward into this uh franchise ordinance is what the attorney best said, cuz I was not around last time that the uh Comcast cable franchise um ordinance was passed. And so all the municipalities um gathered in a meeting late last month. And it was introduced to everyone and template set out for everyone to get um introduced and passed by January. So for us, that timeline is introduction, December, passage in January to meet that timeline, even though um it's doubtful that the county council will even move that quickly um to get it passed on there.
You meant introduction in November and pass in December.
In November and passage in December. Thank, I'm getting ahead of myself. So that'll be ready to go by January. So like I said, it kinda came out of left field late last month, but it's it's pretty standard. Attorney Best took it, um, the template they sent uh revised it um based off of the towns to make it an upper Marlboro ordinance, um, for instance. So I don't really have any huge comments. If anyone has any big uh questions about structure, I'd probably have to read it, reach out to the negotiating committee uh to get a lot of that stuff answered.
But if you have questions.
Yeah, please ask. I'll try to answer them as much and I can get back to you guys with.
I I have a question. Um, and it pertains to like, um, and and I have Comcast. Yeah, I do have Comcast, have to. But so when it comes to underground cabling, does Comcast take care of that? Do they have, I'm sure they have the ability to manage underground cabling.
Usually we see that with new construction. Um, they don't really do the uh power lines. It really goes by permitting on the county level. Um, so I know a lot of new construction homes, a lot of it's underground, electrical and cable and utility. Um, out where it's grandfathered in on the poles, it's grandfathered in. I don't see the utility companies going through a huge uh expense to bury a lot of the utility lines.
Right. Well, that that's, I understand that, but I was just wondering, have you, uh, you know, reached out to um, or maybe in the past, because I know that town was approached um by a company to bury the cables and we did not take advantage of that. So I'm wondering now, you know, with things like this coming up, it would be a good opportunity, or at least just an inquiry to know what can we do in this area? Because this is still very local, like Prince George's County, I mean, Upper Marlboro. And um, there's so much new construction going up around us. Why not like say like, well, if you're doing this with these areas and their new construction, why not think about what we can do for the town of Upper Marlboro to also get some of those cables buried?
So uh you could pretty much brought up the point about the Main Street cables being buried, is that the that part? Yeah, so that was uh from my understanding, that was before my time during the, one of the last courthouse renovations. There is a couple million dollars set aside to bury the the power lines downtown. Um, and someone made the decision, town or the county, to reappropriate that funds um elsewhere. So that did not happen. That is definitely an ongoing discussion, um, cuz the the hard part is it's a crowding cats. We gotta get Pepco, Verizon, Comcast, and any other like INET or anyone else who has like stuff on those lines to get them buried. And I think that should be a part of the town's overall economic development goal for Main Street. I think we need to move forward on that. I can, it'd be hard to do it probably in the neighborhoods. The cost benefit wouldn't really be there as much. But definitely, yeah, Main Street would really benefit from that. It'd be a huge undertaking, but I think it would make it look a lot better, replacing telephone poles with street lamps.
Um, yeah.
But then Marlboro Town and I think Spring Branch don't have any uh overhead power lines. Um, I think all their utilities are buried in Spring Branch, Marlboro Town, then Rectory and School, and some of those older communities have the power lines and everything on the power lines.
Especially with all the functions we do down there. That would make for some great pictures.
So Kyle, I think, does this, this ties more into that, the conversations that are the meetings that Pepco is having about purchasing the lights than this agreement, or does it tie into this agreement?
Oh, that's his complete, that's Pepco, this is Comcast. So it's completely separate um
So.
So this isn't streetlights at all. This is just giving Comcast permission to run cable lines through municipal streets. And they pay a fee of X amount of dollars. But that's another discussion that's gonna be coming up in the coming months is the Pepco and the streetlights. Is another joint venture with all the municipalities and counties.
I'm just putting like a general note into the rolling agenda and see if it's something that can come up.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Duckett, did I answer your question? All right.
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll just make sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we do have a public comment on that. Do any other commissioners have any questions, comments? There's, as obviously introductions, you have time to email them over to Kyle too. Okay. Let's take that public comment.
Hi, Joe Urclay, Old Marlboro Pike. Um, in the old comp am I supposed to be a panelist?
It's fine. Go ahead and.
Um, if you can hear me, yes.
We can hear you, yeah.
Um, so in the old Comcast agreement that was signed with the county, the county got the peg money um for anyone who purchased Comcast in town. Um, so you may wanna look to see if we can get part of that that back. Um, also uh, we have not had a television channel through Comcast. We do with Verizon, but not with Comcast. And if you are actively putting a signal on it, it may be worth talking to them about trying to get a Comcast channel also, so we can put out information. Um, in regards to the Pepco thing, um, that came up during the revitalization plan for Upper Marlboro. And when I was a commissioner, we actually asked Pepco about it. And they first quoted us a price of half a million dollars, to which Steve Sonnet said, okay, sign us up. And then suddenly they came back to us with, oh, well, it's gonna be a million dollars. And then they kept raising the price. Um, at one point, there was a discussion about, even if they couldn't underground the lines there, moving them so they were run behind the buildings rather than directly on Main Street. And I have no idea what the status of that ended up. Steve Sonnet may know more.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bring a good point on the channel. We don't have a Comcast cable access. When I asked, it was cuz the agreement had expired. So then once we pass this, we can get a Comcast channel and mimic the broadcast signal onto that as well. And we do get pegged money from the county as well. About fifteen to three thousand per year, which we used to fund the cable access channel. Verizon.
Well, I think, I think most of that, yeah, came, came from Verizon, not from Comcast. Comcast just paid peg to the county, not to us.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Colbert, did you have?
No.
I thought you just said. All right, so we'll leave that um to pop back up again and hopefully get that passed in December. Um, the last thing on our The last thing on our business agenda is a proclamation which is has to be read into the record as part of municipal government works month, which is part of the town's banner city designation. So this is a formality that helps us get that little plaque in town hall.
All right, the Board of Commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro proclamation. Whereas the town was founded in seventeen oh six and incorporated in eighteen seventy. And whereas Maryland is the home to one hundred and fifty six other municipalities. And whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Upper Marlboro is proud to promote municipal government awareness month. Awareness. And whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life to the respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play and explore. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners for the town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League and declaring November twenty twenty two to be municipal government works month in the town of Upper Marlboro. Signed Sarah Franklin, President Mayor, Town of Upper Marlboro.
Questions, comments, changes, concerns?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, there is public comment on this item.
Here we go.
Joe Urquhart, old Marlboro Pike. Not specifically this proclamation, but proclamations in general, when you're doing these monthly ones, it might be worthwhile trying to do them in the prior months. So that way, you know, you declare that it's November is municipal works month when it's not almost over. So anyways, that was, that was it.
All right, so that is done. We will move on to administrative updates. Got anything?
We were awarded, I just sent the email to the board today. We were awarded the five thousand dollar Pepco electrical resiliency grant. So that's going to allow us to purchase some generators, both for town operations in case emergency and then also some smaller ones that allow us to loan out to residents who have medical equipment and whatnot. So that's excited. That's the first grant that our grant administration for her charity HR is handling her grants is kind of applied for and gotten. So that's exciting.
That is exciting.
I think that's it. Although we're a drop off site for a lot of donations as well right now.
Correct. We should say that one more time. If you if you want to donate food, new gently used coats, hats, mittens, et cetera, or toys, the town hall has those collection bins. They'll be emptied into town hall where they'll be secured regularly. And also because I knit, I said, let's get together on, I think, the twenty ninth and knit at town hall. So if anyone else does that kind of thing to make hats and scarves, join me from six, six thirty to eight thirty. Anything else, guys?
Yes. So I just want to let, actually the Board of Commissioners and any residents or business owners on the call know that on Tuesday, the twenty ninth, they are having Sheriff High's home going service. If you all didn't know, the sheriff hired a current sheriff passed away last Friday. So his service will be held at the Equestrian Center. And they will be processing from the Equestrian Center Downwater Street. As it is of today, Downwater Street, making a right onto Judges Drive, going around the front of the courthouse, going up by Pratt Street to get on Marlboro Pike to go past two oh two up to three oh one and making a right on three oh one. So what does that mean? It's going to probably be a hundred plus car processional. Which means we're going to have to shut the roads down for this processional to come through the town. So it'll just be a lot of traffic for a period of time on Tuesday. The service starts at twelve, so I'm assuming maybe an hour, hour and a half after that. So just wanted to let people know that it will be a tremendous amount of traffic in the downtown area on Tuesday. And that's it.
All right. We will move on to public comment and we have public comment.
Joe Urquhart, old Marlboro Pike. I am also the president of the Friends of the Upper Marlboro Branch Library. And I wanted to mention that Ayana, our vice president of the Friends Group has proposed having a silent book club where people just get together and all read in the same place. And I thought I would throw it out in case there was interest from here. Once we've actually scheduled a time, we'll post stuff in the library and I'll try and post it our next door to let people know when we're actually doing it.
Any other public comment? Okay. So we'll just do preliminary approval of next meeting's agenda. We've cleared a ton of stuff, which is excellent. We have some stuff to tackle in the new year, so I do want to bring ordinance twenty twenty two oh eight and ordinance twenty twenty two oh nine just on to the agenda, whether we talk about them or not. At least we have the opportunity to, which are the ones that were introduced today. It is possible. So we talked about license plate reader at the work session, but we didn't have that today because the quote hasn't come in from the company. So it's possible that that quote will be in, so that could go on the work session. The trail study letter, the information didn't come in to finish that. We also talked about the work session, so that could wind up on the agenda as well. But again, those are like older business items that'll just be on there. If anything news come to mind that you guys want to bring up about them. There are a few things, well, there's two three things we've been kind of trying to deal with, but haven't had much chance. We talked about the police office space and that was kind of just put on hold, but a few of you have asked me about it since then. So I'd like to bring that back up at the work session. And a few of you also asked me about sustainable communities working group. So I'd like to bring that back up. Then Chief has asked about employee contracts. And that also is like a brief memo, so. What I've done, so we've talked on and off and on about the vision plan. And what I, I'd like to add it on there because I would like to get it so that we can put it on the web, get edit approved from you guys to put it on the website. So the residents can give us feedback. So what I've done is I've gone through and made it like really simple bullet points so that it can go on some slides. Maybe fifteen minutes, John, fifteen, twenty minutes, you think? From what I've got together to just go over that so we can get it out for input. And then one other thing is we've been doing some speed studies on school lane and we're going to move over to Spring Branch Drive to talk about some temporary speed bumps. So I know that sounds like a lot, but I think it's actually a lot of fairly short things. And if we get to a need to table later in the meeting, we can do so.
Can you list those out for us?
Yeah. Okay, so the two ordinances from tonight, twenty twenty two oh eight and twenty twenty two oh nine. Trail study letter, the license plate reader.
So Mary, yes, the license plate reader quote came in today. So yes, I would like to put that on there for next week. It literally just came in this morning and I told Kyle about it, so it'll be ready for the next meeting.
And the trail study probably won't be ready till January.
Okay, so we'll just cross the dress. Yeah, so license plate, the two ordinances, the license plate reader. Police office space. Sustainable Communities Work Group. Those are all like older items. Then the newer, new items would be police department employee contracts, speed bumps and vision plan.
Okay, can you hold on one second? Police Department, what is that?
Employee contracts.
Okay, and the rest?
Vision plan and speed bumps.
Okay, and you said like fit twenty minutes for the vision plan. Is there something specific like in the vision plan that you like to address? Because I prefer it be something specific. Or I'm requesting that it be something specific, whether it's we want to send out questionnaires. Now, this is how we're finalizing the questionnaire. Or is it about one specific area in town? I would like it to be like customized, customized and focused on whatever that is instead of like general overall vision plan. So then that way we're prepared to say, okay, well, this is what we're discussing specifically and not just a overall vision.
So it's actually the recommendations that are the recommendations that have been collected and collated from residents, stakeholders, et cetera, et cetera, pretty much in bullet form of the vision plan. They are
Recommendation review.
Right. And then for the purpose of putting it up on the website and getting residents to engage with it.
Okay, so recommendation review for us and then what you said, that particular, whatever it is that we're discussing, then we're going to be placing that on the website for more input. That is, okay. And then what was the last one after the vision plan?
They say the speed bumps already.
Oh, speed bumps.
Speed bumps.
Okay, thank you.
And staff and I went over all of the potential things that could be on the agenda last week and they have backup material for almost everything. So you should still, you should get a mostly complete packet tomorrow. So that you, because it's an earlier meeting, so.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, what else have we got here? Yes, this event that Commissioner Duckett and Commissioner Lot have been working super hard on is finally going to be here and I am super excited because it's been a long time since I've been able to go like this and then open my eyes and see an amazing event. So I'm excited. I will be there to help you guys set up and all the things. Hope everyone will be there and Commissioner Duckett or Lot, if you want to say anything about it.
No, I'm just super excited. We're, you know, some, we should start seeing some decorations go up at least this week, of course, because we're down to the wire. So we're having meetings weekly. This is our push meeting coming up this week and then we'll have like a slight one maybe the day before, but I think this will be it. We've been working really hard. Everyone has been really helpful and participating and I think everybody's really excited. So yeah, this is like a first and we'll just see our first Christmas lighting situation. I guess we're kind of also waiting for that. Anyway, that's it. I won't go into any more detail. That's it. We're just excited.
All right. Okay, everyone, we, oh, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine o'clock?
Back in. Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Duckett.
Hi.
Mr. Hanchet.
Hi.
Commissioner Lot.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good Thanksgiving.